We'll now call the meeting of the Waco City Council on November 5th, 2024 to order at 3:02 PM. City Council Work Session. And welcome to all those in the gallery here today at Boski Theater at 100 Washington here in downtown Waco. And welcome also to the viewers at home watching on the Waco City Cable Channel. We will now start the meeting with a moment of silence. Great. Thank you, everybody, again for being here. We will start the session with anyone who would like to speak on a work session agenda item. City Secretary Hicks, do we have anybody today? Seeing no one is registered to speak, we will now recess the regular session and convene into work session with a report from the City Manager, City Manager Ford.
Thanks, Mayor. Welcome, Council. We've got a great agenda for you this afternoon, and there's no changes between posting and now, so that's good news. Wanted to highlight a couple of recognition items, and it won't surprise the Council, but each year in November, in anticipation of Veterans Day next week, we like to honor our city employees that served in the branches of military. And so we've got a few of our team members in the back who are veterans. I really appreciate y'all being here. But we have about 170 veterans on our city workforce. It's more than 10% of our workforce served in some branch of the military. This year, in addition to any comments y'all want to say to our team members that are here or watching on the video, this year, we also had our human resources team and communications team go a little further and create a series of recognition videos to honor the service of these employees. And we've got three videos, and before we show those, I just, I think it's important to kind of tie it all together and say, why is that, why are veterans a great part of our workforce? And it's, it's out of the discipline and care and service for their country that they signed up to serve, and those values carry over really nicely into service of Waco. And I'm consistently impressed with the individuals in our public safety units, in pretty much every other department as well, that bring those characteristics that they learned in the military to Waco and impact our community with it. So real proud of each one of those 170 people. Let's show the videos, and then want to give the Council a minute to recognize those that are here with us as well. So Gus, will you roll the footage for me?
Hi, I'm Desi Banks. I've been with the Waco Police Department for 21 years, and I served in the Army for six and a half years.
Hi, I'm Sarah Rayly. I'm an Assistant City Attorney here for the City of Waco, and I was in the Marine Corps for five years.
Hi, I'm Officer Sophie Martinez. I have served with the Waco Police Department for over 27 and a half years. I also served in the United States Army as a Staff Sergeant in the Military Police Corps for 11 years.
My name's Sean Rowland. I work in Fleet Services for the City of Waco, and I've served eight years in the Army as a Diesel mechanic.
Hi, my name is Gary Hyatt. I'm a commander with the Waco Police Department. I've worked for the Police Department since July of 2008. Prior to that, I served in the US Army from 2002 until 2007.
I think we've got, I think we've got three total videos.
My name is Jeff Kyle. I've been with the department for about four years now. Served eight years in the Marine Corps, four with the infantry, and four with the recon community.
Hi, I'm Teresa Bryant. I'm the Community Outreach Coordinator for the City of Waco Public Works Department. I've been with the city for 26 years. Prior to the city, I was in the United States Air Force. I served for eight years as a ground air radio communication specialist.
My name is Brooke Bauer. I worked for the City of Waco Police Department for about three years now, and I served in the United States Army as an infantryman for about 10 years.
Hi, I'm Bill Gowdy. I work as a video production specialist in the city's Communications and Marketing Department. I served 34 years in the Navy, most of that time in combat camera units.
I'm Detective Eric Trojanowski. I'm with the Waco Police Department Special Crimes Unit. I've been with the city of Waco for the last 17 years. Before that, I was on active duty in the United States Air Force from 1999 to 2008. I was a C-130 EH navigator and a proud member of the 40th Airlift Squadron Screaming Eagles.
I've been working with Waco PD for the last year. Before this, I was in the Army for seven and a half years, and I served as a combat engineer.
Hi, I'm Tammy Honey. I'm a Deputy Court Clerk for the City of Waco Municipal Courts, and I've served the United States Army nearly three years at an administrative specialist.
Hi, my name is Kyle Ramsey, and I work with the US Waco Library as a part-time library assistant. I was in the Texas Army National Guard for seven years as a 35 Fox, which is an intelligence analyst.
My name is Virill George Jr. I'm a commander here at the Waco Police Department. I've been with the city for 20 years now, and I served four years in the United States Marine Corps.
Hi, I'm Samantha Segura. I work as a librarian for the City of Waco at the East Waco Library, and I did six years in the United States Air Force at the 11th Intelligence Squadron as a geospatial imagery analyst.
Hi, I'm Juan Avila. I've been with the Waco Police Department for 14 years. Currently work as a family violence detective. I was in the Marines for nine years.
And Council, we've got several veterans in the room, and I would like them to stand and be acknowledged, and those at the back as well. And that's, it's hard to get veterans to want to get recognized. It's embedded in them to serve without an expectation to be served. And so appreciate everybody that got here today, and also the folks on the video, you know, stepping out of their comfort zone a little bit and being recognized. So at this time, if you're a vet, I see Michael out there, and Michael's a vet too, right? Our new airport director, but would love to have you stand up and be acknowledged. Please feel free to say anything you want, and we've got a little surprise at the end. I want to bring out a surprise at the end.
I want to, first of all, express our profound gratitude on behalf of the Council for all of our city employees who have served. Your sacrifice, not only to our nation, but has now continued in your service to our community. So we're so grateful for you, and you continue to serve, and it is profoundly inspirational. So thanks to all of you for your continued service to our community after what you've done for our nation. It's just such a wonderful aspect to know that we have these great citizen veterans here on our team. But I'm grateful to Bradley Ford, Ashley Nystrom, I saw Sarah Rayly was featured as well, who assisted our Council in setting up the Veterans Advisory Board several years ago. And I think Bradley's going to talk a little bit about one of the programs, one of the projects that they just accomplished. But I appreciate my fellow Council members, our mayor, their support. I know, just like Darius Yueng, I'm an Army brat myself, and I know many of us have military in our family, but this is a profound gratitude from us to you, and we're doing our best to help veterans in our communities, both our city staff and out in the community. So thank you all.
Yeah, I appreciate that, Josh. I'll jump in and just echo those comments of profound gratitude for the service of our men and women that we have here at the city and beyond, both that work at the city and that live in the city of Waco, if you're here in the crowd or watching from home. Really cannot say thank you enough. Josh touched on this, but both my mom and my dad met in the Army. After they divorced, my mom remarried another Army guy, and he went on to do three tours for, in Iraq during Operation Iraqi Freedom. And currently, my little brother serves as a Staff Sergeant for the Rangers 3 Battalion at Fort Moore in Georgia. So I can confidently say I wouldn't be here where I am today without sacrifice and service of our service members. So thank you so, so much for the work that you have done and continue to do in and for our city.
I'll just say that we don't thank you enough because we can't thank you enough. So, but I'm glad that we have this opportunity here today, and from the bottom of my heart, thank you.
Thank you all for everything that you've done for our country and that you do for our city. They say service is the price we pay for the air that we breathe, and we have to really, really recognize that our real freedoms, they come because of choices, and those choices are ones that you all made. You made them to protect our country, to serve our country, and to uphold the values of our country, and we thank you for keeping our country and our values free.
Thank you. All the Council members, what they have said, I feel as well. My daddy had nine brothers, and out of the nine brothers, seven of them all were in the service, and one, Air Force, Marines, Army. And so I wasn't an Army brat or anything like that, but my family were all defense officers. I've been called worse. But anyway, I want to thank our veterans that are in the city's service. We can't thank you enough for being in the service, taking care of our country, and now you're in the Waco team, taking care of our residents and citizens. So I want to thank you from, again, I'm not an Army brat, but I want to thank you from District Two for your service and your continued service as well. So thank you so much.
Yeah, thanks all, like all the Council members up here today. Thank you for your service. It was sort of voluntary, you put your lives on the line for our freedoms. We wouldn't be here today in this little city council thing if it wasn't for you guys. They wouldn't be holding a national election today if it wasn't for you guys. And just super proud of you all, and super proud that you're a part of the City Waco Team. We're proud of you here on Council, I'm proud of you as mayor. It was, the presentation was neat because we got to see what you do at the city and then what you did in the service. And I'll agree with Bradley of our City Manager Ford in that y'all are so unassuming and modest of your, of your military service. I'm just so super impressed that we've got this kind of veteran leadership, both in the, at the nation and our, in our state and on our City Waco team. So appreciate you guys being here today, and thank you for your service.
Thanks, Council, for your comments, and it's, you know, there's, the Council, a lot of times, for the folks that are in the room, from staff, that aren't in these meetings often, they, they get to say a lot of nice things to people. But when you listen to the words they just shared, and you hear their voices kind of cracking, and you hear that emotion, you know it's really heartfelt. And so I appreciate each one of you for caring about these individuals. I also want to, I got a little surprise. Josh, if you don't mind, would like you to help unveil that special initiative you mentioned that's coming out of our Veterans Advisory Board. We worked with Veterans One Stop Shop and City Center Waco to start a new program, a community recognition project that'll go live at the end of this week. We'll have banners along Austin Avenue, which is our Veterans Parade Route, that honor local veterans. And so real proud of Josh's work, Councilmember Gordon's work, as well as several members of the staff that, that made this happen. And we'll keep those banners up for the better part of November, and you want to unveil what those look like, Josh? Yeah, yeah, very good. This is year one of that program, and so if you've got somebody in your family that served, we'll be looking for hearing their story and getting more banners out there next year to honor those stories, and that I think it'll be a really neat way for people to walk down Austin Avenue and say, that's my grandpa, or that's my dad, or that's my mom, and I'm proud of her, and I'm going to take my picture under her banner. And so I think it's a neat way to honor the service, and looking forward to seeing those out later this week. Next up.
Bradley, it's awesome that you and your staff have come up with this recognition of our veterans. I think that's awesome, truly awesome.
Thanks, Councilmember. I think it's going to be, I do think it's going to be neat as well. We, we do have another PSA I think I'm supposed to highlight, a public service announcement coming out of the Comms and Marketing Team. It's the kind of latest and greatest PSA. It highlights our Lost Pets Waco map and feature, and it's going to, there's going to be some friendly faces that you recognize in this one. Oh, my gosh.
I like that one.
Such a downgrade from the last three videos here.
It's a nod to Men in Black, as you can tell.
In the middle.
And the dogs.
The middle's the best looking, for sure.
The dogs that we, that we feature are all rescue animals, out of the shelter. So, and then, of course, we've got, you know, the two guys here that will, will be prominent featured. Why don't we roll that, Gus, for them?
How did you lose Frank again?
Look, do you know how hard it is to keep tabs on a Romulan?
So you're back from outer space. I just walked in to find you here with that sad look upon your face. Should have changed that stupid lock. Should have made you leave your key. You might know.
Frank, get your head back in the car. Look, man, we've got to get you microchipped. We've been putting this off for way too long.
Ah, my bad.
Besides, we didn't lose him, we just don't know where he is.
Wouldn't have happened if he was microchipped, just saying.
He's a tiny pug with a big mouth. How far could he have gone? You worry too much. You know the difference between you and me?
What's that?
I make this look good.
I like that walk, guys.
Excuse me. Y'all seen this pug? He's about gay high, big attitude, thinks he's funny.
Is this a joke?
Trust me, we wish it was.
You guys seen this dog? We've been looking all night. Pug, big attitude. Nope.
Wait, have you guys tried lostpetswaco.com?
Lost Pets Waco features a real-time map of where stray animals were picked up in the field by animal control. Search the entire list or search by location. Just click on the map. Check here first for your lost pet. Most pets are picked up within one mile of their homes.
Wait, aren't you the man?
Nope, I'm just a figment of your imagination.
Are we, are we live? All right. Well, you really did it this time, slick. How did you lose Frank again?
Look, do you know how hard it is to keep tabs on a Romulan?
Sorry, we had a helicopter fly around.
You worry too much. I shouldn't pay the rent. I can keep straight face on set. That's the difference.
Okay, look at it.
You believe that part, so I hope.
Well, I do, I wanted to say that I guess everybody's heard by now that Darius and I won the Best Acting By Buddy Cop Duo in a local cable channel PSA. And I want to thank the Academy. I want to thank my drama coach, Josh Borderood. I want to thank my wardrobe director, who, for not asking, taking me out of my black suit safe zone, you know? So, you know, a lot of fun shooting this thing, and I appreciate Dory Helm and the others that worked on this, this project. And really, the lead actor in this deal was Darius. I mean, he's flawless. We were out there for, what, three hours shooting this thing, and luckily, we got 30 seconds of good film there. But it's always fun doing these. And most importantly, the purpose of it is to, is for the animal shelter and taking care of your pups, making sure they're chipped and neutered and spayed. So let's, and I appreciate, see Ashley Nystrom over there in the corner, her leadership out, out at the Pet Circle, and Melissa Sheldon out there too, this is all to kind of get some momentum going at the, at the Pet Circle. So my co-star, or my, my, my leading actor, I'm the supporting actor, I was saying.
Thanks to Sheila Hilliard, my sixth grade theater arts teacher, for teaching me how to be a good scene partner. No, I, I agree. We spent a lot of time out there, and we have a really phenomenal team that put this video together, and I felt this way when, when Josh was Abe Lincoln in the library. You, you spend time doing it, and you, there's no, you're like, I don't know how this is going to turn out, and then you see it, and it's like, this is incredible. Obviously, there was more green screen in this, but yeah, we, they are, we have so many talented people that work here at the City of Waco. From the folks that put the video together to the folks that work at Pet Circle that, who the video is there to benefit. So yeah, go ahead and get your pets microchipped, guys. My wife and I have taken probably six or seven dogs in the last few years to the nearest fire station, Fire Station Eight on Cobb's, to get them checked, and probably two out of the eight have been microchipped. We successfully reunited two, which is nice. But wish we could have been eight for eight on that. And I'm sure the strain on our city's resources in terms of operating the shelter would also appreciate a successful reunification of pet and owner. So get your pets microchipped, and if you find a pet and you're not sure, take them to their nearest fire station, and they will check them for you.
Great. I would encourage everybody to go out to the Lost Pets Waco website. The map that shows the, the animals that are in our care has been completely redone to run faster and to be more informative, and so appreciate IT helping with that. And right, the goal is, I mean, obvious, to generate some, some laughs and some awareness around the lost pet issue, because the less time that we can have them in our care at the shelter, the better, since we're still right at 100% capacity heading into the spring season, when we know we're going to be getting a lot more animals. And so adopt, don't shop, but also get your pets chipped and use the resource that's over at Lost Pets Waco. And special thanks, thank you, guys, for having a sense of humor and being willing to, to lead out in that way.
It was a great time.
Clearly, y'all enjoyed it.
There was a, perhaps a misstep in the awarding of the best actor in the, the best in the video was the dog. Where's Frank's accolades, okay? And the narrator, of course, but no, it's great. This is also, as we're leaning into the holiday season, it's a great time for folks to consider those Christmas gifts that could come from Pet Circle, because it's nothing better than a live animal on Christmas morning.
Noted that you think that.
You've got a bunch of animals on your doorstep.
I won't, but I won't, but we're thinking about, we're thinking about it, so, yeah, it's all good.
Mayor, Council, we do have one informal report on the agenda today. It's IR 872. Provides an update on progress made out of the four task groups from the Strategic Housing Plan that was presented to Council in 2022. Galen Price is here to answer any questions you may have on that. As part of that plan that was adopted, we, we made a commitment to the community and to you as a Council to continuously update you of progress being made, and so that's what the IRs is doing. We do have 31 resolutions on the agenda. Oh, go ahead.
Sorry. I do appreciate the update, Galen. I saw him somewhere. There he is. I am curious, like, for the things that are in progress that we talked about, like the Community Land Trust and the Housing Trust Fund, are, is there an anticipated timeline? I know there have been some, some ongoing things that were happening through, and pieces of the puzzle that don't involve you all that are bigger than that, but I was hoping to see if there, you know, where we were going with that, because I wanted to, I mean, is it a year thing? Is it an 18-months thing, 24, you know, just, just some directive of, of where we're going with that? And especially the rental registration ordinance.
Well, good afternoon, Mayor and Council. To answer your question. Yes. We are looking at exploring different options from other cities, and once we have compiled that, we do look to kind of put together to see what works best for Waco and bring that forth. Now, from a timing perspective, it's really difficult to, to give an actual hard deadline, but I will say that, you know, within the next 12 months, definitely we will be looking to, to bring something forward, if not sooner than that.
Because I know some of the things, you know, were, were particular timed windows, you know, and as we continue to do the ADA stuff and the work, the great work that is happening with TSTC, and, you know, when we're talking about all the things that we've done in lead abatement and, and housing rehabilitation, which has been very strong, and I applaud staff for leaning into that and helping our residents better their environments in a way that they can do it with dignity. I'm great, greatly appreciative of that part, but I know that as we lean into these seasons and economic challenges and upheavals, there's still some things that I think we can do as a city, and they've already been identified, so that's the easy part, is identifying the what, and I think it's just the how and the when that I would like to keep a continual eye on, because it's not something that's going to go away. And I think that with the number of people, while we lean to, you know, the American dream of home ownership, there are a bunch of people in the world that rent, but they, they don't have protections that they should. So I think that, that those are some things that we should really, really be considering and looking into. I do appreciate all that the city has done with our vacant properties to align a more strategic plan. I know that from the day I sat here, I was like, what are we doing, and why are we doing it, and can we do it with some more intentionality, and we have. And so I appreciate staff for that. But I'm, I want to see, I want to see us get this through, and so in a way that we can be proud of, of the opportunities that we, that we create for our residences regarding their housing and, and, and housing protections. Thank you.
Again, while you're down there, that's a great report. I like how you outlined it, vacancy, density, neighborhood revitalization, and looking at that housing trust, evaluating the possibility of that. But in the status report, I encourage folks to look at that, pages 13 through 15. We're super proactive. I mean, this Council understands the, the housing challenges here in the city, and we're proactive about trying to figure out a way to solve that, and appreciate your work, Galen.
Thank you. And he got, he got the memo. Maybe you should be with them on Men in Black. Thanks, Galen, for.
Thank you.
For a brief update there. We, um, we do have thirty-one resolutions on the agenda today. I'm going to highlight two of them. The first is Resolution eight eighty-two. I just want to make sure there's clarity on, uh, from the public standpoint of what we're doing over at Pet Circle. We are acquiring additional properties around the current properties we own. Oh yeah, thanks for the map. We're acquiring everything in red along Twenty-third Street and Circle Road. The item before you is seeking, it has a recommendation to spend a little over nine-hundred-thousand dollars to acquire those properties and allows us to ensure our long-term viability at this location. It gives us room to grow. It also gives us room to shift buildings around as needed, as well as provide for future opportunities that we're currently not doing. So excited to bring this forward and just wanted to make sure folks knew with these acquisitions, we're, we're in a really good position to be at that location for a really long time and serve the animal community very well. The other highlight I had was Resolution eight eighty-nine, and I think there's a map on this one too, hopefully. It approves the purchase of wireless access points, a Cisco switch, firewall, solar poles and cameras, insulation network cabling and fiber optic cabling, um, all to, to deploy, or to support the deployment of a mesh Wi-Fi network at the Future Steam Center on the River and Martin Luther King Drive Boulevard, as well as the Bridge Street Plaza. Those are the two images you're seeing on the top there. Those, the coloring or shading indicates the quality of network that we present once we make these installations. Green is of course really good, yellow is pretty good. These, this will be a significant amenity for both the Steam Center and East Waco, giving essential internet access into these locations, both for visitors that are in buildings, but also visitors that are just wanting to hang out and enjoy the public spaces that have been created. We're funding this out of, this is about a four hundred thousand dollar project, we're funding it out of our American Rescue Plan allocations. Galen will be speaking to that here in a few minutes in the work session and also our federal support from CDBG. And so leveraging both those assets to bring a really, really important, um, you know, resource into this location, expanding digital access, promoting equity and really driving people into spaces that, that we want to be in. So excited for the team that put this together. We do have four ordinances on the agenda. All of them are on second reading, so Kathleen's going to get ready to read a whole lot. And that concludes my report today. And I'll take any questions or comments from the council.
Brad, I did have a couple of comments on the resolutions, just highlights more than anything else. Number eight eighty-three and eight eighty-four, uh, those are both related to the new riverwalk that we're about ready to, I think we've got the bids out right now and we should get started on that early next year. It's about a twenty-month project. But those, uh, the two on the agenda or the, the resolution agenda today are about the lighting and the water elements and the waterfall elements are going to go into that. It's going to be from the law school all the way to Webster, I believe. And it's, it's going to look fantastic, another great Welcome to Waco signature area there. Also, eight seven, eight ninety-seven and eight ninety-eight. We talk a lot about the streets that we're working on and it's a big, giant part of our budget every year and a giant part of our prioritization, but these are a couple of sidewalks that, uh, pretty good size. And one's out in Richie Road, a quarter mile of, of length out there. And another one is on Jefferson Street, about a mile on Jefferson Street that we're talking about, going from St. Francis all the way up to, I forget the cross street, Thirteenth, I believe. Two and a half million dollars of sidewalk repair and, and a lot of federal funding in there too. So we're taking advantage, I like this in so many ways, because we're working on the sidewalks. We're getting, we're, we're leveraging our city dollars with federal funds. So we're, we're very conscious of multimodal, uh, issues here in the city. And the last, just nine oh six, nine oh seven and nine oh nine, big projects, ten million dollar projects with water lines to the industrial park, utility lines on I-35 and wastewater lines on what we call the North Interceptor Project, uh, just getting the infrastructure in place for the city and, and trying to be wise with spending taxpayer, uh, funding. So, good work.
Bradley, I want to say, just follow up on, uh, as I was reading those reports, I was so excited and happy to see Sandtown Plaza. Thank you, staff. Thank you for that.
Excited.
Appreciate the, uh, the, the good work with the Wi-Fi, both at the Future Steam Center there in Doris Miller, um, but also at, uh, at Bridge Street, which, and I don't want to steal any District One thunder there, but I do appreciate that our kind of public spaces have this Wi-Fi. And I, I'm sure vendors and attendees at the farmer's market, in addition to all the wonderful activity that's going to be going on at the steam, but I, I assume they will really appreciate having that strength of signal out there. So appreciate the good work staff's doing over there to further operationalize the, the Bridge Street Plaza.
Yeah, it's really, really appreciate IT.
It will certainly make their processes easier, um, knowing that they have good, strong, dedicated signal and all that. That also kind of helps us advance with some work that we've been working on for a while, you know, becoming a smarter city, having, uh, localized fiber optics and Wi-Fi available in our public spaces. We've done that strategically. I want to thank the IT team for that over, since COVID and, uh, plus, um, you know, enhancing the area around the Dewey and North Waco, enhancing the area around, um, Miller in East Waco. And, uh, and the things will continue because that, that makes sense for us to do it in that way. So I'm appreciative of those steps that are going. Also, real quick, eight ninety-four and eight ninety-five, I don't want to sleep on the updates that have happened to the municipal court, um, in both security and technology. That is something that, I mean, you know, you, you don't, you don't, you may not deal with the municipal court unless you got to deal with the municipal court. But what we want to do is make sure that the things that, that need to happen in that court can happen and that will happen with updated security measures and updated techn, technology measures. And so I'm thankful that we had, um, the resources in that way and some of the way they have restructured fees and how they do their technology fee to pay for itself. So that is good management and I'm, I'm grateful to see that those advances are happening.
Councilmember, thank you for reminding me about, I, I was thinking I wanted to talk about the municipal court that's being done, all the work that's being done and new work being done there. It's been a long-awaited time for our municipal court judge, Ms., uh, Judge Garcia. Thank you for reminding me about all that and thanks staff, uh, for bringing this forward at this time, at this particular time. And, uh, I had to go to the municipal court, not for me, but I went with my grandson to pay his ticket. He wanted me to accompany him. So I went, so I got to see firsthand all the problems that he had at that particular time and how long it took for people just to go and make a payment on their ticket. So what's, what we're approving today is really going to help our folks, our citizens of going in there, new security cameras, new this, new that, new laptops, uh, and dropboxes and vaults and everything that he, he has needed in that court. So I'm glad we're doing that for, not just for the judge, but for our residents and constituents that go and use and have to go to the municipal court. So now it's going to be a friendlier and nicer place. So thank, thank you staff for that.
Thanks, councilmembers. I, um, it's fun hanging out with y'all, but we need to take a five-minute break.
Okay.
We have a, a slight issue with our interpreters.
Okay.
And we have a request for interpretation from a resident and we want to get the interpretation issue resolved so they can participate in the meeting with us. So let's take five minutes. We'll get, Michelle's working on it, but we'll, we'll get it solved and then we'll come back together. Sorry.
A five-minute break here? Yeah, the soft yes.
We're, we're limping along on some streaming problems, but, but I appreciate City Secretary for, for doing what she can to get us resolved.
Do we have anything else on the business session review? Okay, then we will next move to the consent agenda. That consent agenda includes Resolutions twenty twenty-four eight seventy-eight through Resolution twenty twenty-four nine oh eight. Are there any items the council would like to remove from the consent agenda? We are pulling eight seventy-eight. That is the first one, uh, which, uh, references the McCad election. We're going to do that one separately tonight. So the consent agenda includes Resolutions, uh, twenty twenty-four eight seven, eight seventy-nine through Resolution nine oh eight, except for the eight seventy-eight. The next item on the, on the agenda is work session items twenty twenty-four eight seventy-three through twenty twenty-four eight seventy-five. City Manager Ford, will you please introduce the first work session?
We've got, uh, Galen Price joining us here at the table to provide a, an update for the council on community on the federal funding that we've received through the American Rescue Plan Act and also local fiscal recovery funds. This update is going to talk about the eligible, eligible uses of the funds, as well as the timeline and the projects that, and buckets that the council has obligated money to. I really appreciate Galen, uh, taking on the ARPA initiative for us. It's been a little bit like purring cats and that cats are not our department heads, but rather the cats are me. And so he's shown a, a great deal of flexibility as we've worked through a, a very new program and, but a very important one, so I look forward to his update today. Galen?
Thank you, Bradley. Good afternoon again, Mayor and Council. As Bradley mentioned, we'll be covering, discussing the eligible use of funds, giving an overview of our city funding plan, talking about our expenses to date and providing a project status update. So to refresh council's memory about the eligible uses, the initial eligible, eligible uses included lost public sector revenue, um, addressing the negative impacts of the pandemic through economic and public health issues, as well as investing in infrastructure, including water, sewer and broadband. In August of twenty twenty-three, Uptree provided additional eligible uses for the ARPA funding, which include emergency relief for natural disasters, um, to support service transportation projects and to support Title One projects, which are projects and activities eligible under the Community Development Block Grant or CDBG. So the city's funding plan was established in October of twenty twenty-one through, um, through feedback from the community as well as from the council. Now, I want to remind you of our commitment and expenditure deadlines, with the commitment deadline of these funds being December thirty-first of twenty twenty-four and the expenditure deadline for these funds, December thirty-first of twenty twenty-six. Now, based on that information, uh, we will be looking to propose additional changes to our plan, given these that have been identified and the time-sensitive nature of the funding. So here you'll see a chart which shows our current amount, as well as some of the proposed adjustments. And the adjustments occurring between the categories of responding to the public health and economic impacts, as well as the disaster relief. Here is a pie chart that shows, um, the current funding allocations for the projects. Slide shows the proposed allocation, the changes that are made, which, there's a slight change between housing and the resiliency projects that have been funded. That shows our expenditures to date, which, uh, those proposed reallocations, those amendments will be forthcoming at our next council meeting, um, for your approval. Here you have a map that shows, a heat map that shows kind of where all the ARPA funds have been invested. So as you can see from the map, uh, the primary investment of these funds have been within the city's core. Up into our project status updates. So to date, we've completed programs such as the MCC job training, of course, the We All Win Small Business Grant Program, um, Creative, Creative Waco Artist Support, and recently in June, the Waco Family Medicine Project was completed. So here are pictures of the newly renovated Waco Family Medicine. Projects that are ongoing, we have several projects that will be coming forth, either on this agenda or, uh, future agendas, including funding for the resiliency, which is the community center and utility generators, um, the Steam Center, which the RFP has been closed. And so now we're, we'll be bringing forth, um, soon, a, uh, resolution for that agreement. Just wanted to highlight, we did receive an additional three point five million dollars of a community project funding award, which was one of the federal appropriations that we received for FY twenty-four. And then as mentioned earlier, um, there is an item regarding the broadband on tonight's agenda, um, for your approval. Additional projects include the Page Estates, um, as well as the Sanger Development, uh, which also received a community project funding award. Then in regards to our housing bridge, um, we're proposing to reallocate funding from the Salvation Army, uh, and this money will be reallocated to the Salvation Army from a different federal source, given the time-sensitive nature of our ARPA funds. Regarding the Creekside Village, uh, as you can see, they've raised over half of the funding needed for the Phase One, um, they've received their construction permit, um, they've begun the grading work and they're working on a water and sewer access plan. Is a video showing, um, kind of what the site looks like at this point in time.
Looks ready for construction.
That concludes my update and I'll answer any questions that you may have.
Any questions for staff on this, guys?
Excited about the way, uh, staff has been, both substantively and creatively, uh, deploying these funds for our strategic purposes. Thank you, Galen, for all the good work you've done through these last several years, uh, with this funding. We appreciate you.
That and just say that, um, I, I can't imagine it's been easy since COVID, um, as, as the federal government has, uh, all of their mandates to distribute all of this funding and, 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 you know, we, we put out for it and, and find the best use for it once it gets to our community. So I appreciate you being kind of the, the filter there to, uh, both, uh, seek these funds and then, and then find the best use, uh, you know, find the, the square peg for the square hole a, as we receive them. Because there are plenty of things that, um, throughout my, my time on council that, that I would have never thought, you know, American Rescue Relief Plan funds or CDBG funds could be used for, but, uh, you and your team have been really thoughtful and creative and, and finding the, the best community use, uh, for these funds and, and acting on that. So I appreciate that and thanks for this update.
Yeah, I'll, I'll say and echo my councilmembers here that I really want to commend staff, uh, and Deputy City Manager Emerson, I know you kind of led this charge too, a, as well as, uh, Director Price. Because yeah, when we get this, anytime you get federal program money, it's like you got to figure out the hooks in it and where you have to spend it and it's not easy. It's not, it's not just, uh, you read it and that's very clear where you put it. As my fellow councilmembers have said, it's got to precisely fit the program and you got to thread the needle with some of these, uh, to make them fit. Uh, and if you look at the information on page twenty-eight, I mean, this is a nice summary of, of, of what we did and you, and you'd already gone over that Director Price, but just highlighting it again, you know, practical things like utility generators. Yeah, we need to get those. You made that fit the program. The Creekside Village, which we're going to hear more about, uh, from John here today, but, uh, that fit the. that fit the program. Small business, just the, you figured out a way to make it fit the small business, three and a half million dollars there, which is amazing. The Waco Family Medicine Expansion, the, and what I liked, the police salaries, we figured out a way to fund the police salaries out of this too. And the crown jewel is the STEAM Center that we're all very excited about. So I appreciate staff working on this to fit this $35 million of federal money into true needs of the city and not, and other things that we were thinking about, these are like one-time deals, we're not creating future obligations for the taxpayers, these are coming in one-time deals from the federal government. So appreciate the work on it, a nice update, I love the format. Thanks, Galen.
Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you. Galen, City Manager Ford, will you introduce the next speaker?
Our next one, you kind of did a good job segueing, talking about federal requirements and, but we've got a really, a really large new grant coming forward. Go ahead, team, come on up to the table. But this next work session is going to discuss the United States EPA Environmental Climate Justice Community Change Grant Award to Mission Waco and its statutory partner, the City of Waco. We're inviting to the table Eric Kaufman, who's on the city team, he's our Sustainable Programs Manager. He's joined by someone that's not a stranger to y'all, John Callaway, who's running Executive Director for Mission Waco, Mission World, as well as Emily Hills, who's Director of the Urban REAP. This group, as well as a few other supporting cast members, wrote a very compelling federal grant application that's been awarded almost $18 million from the EPA into the Waco market. Mission Waco is going to serve as the lead applicant, we're happy to be in support, and so the team's going to describe the various uses for this $18 million and talk about the roles and responsibilities of what we're trying to accomplish. And so I'm excited to hear, I think Eric's going to kick us off, is that correct?
Yep.
Excited to hear from the team and just a special thanks for y'all's efforts as well as the other team members. I see LaShonda here, and I know there's several other team members that supported this initiative, and very thankful for all the work y'all put in to bring us probably what'll end up being our largest grant award of the year into the Waco market. So Eric, why don't you take us away?
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor and Council, for this opportunity to talk about this exciting grant. It's kind of the culmination of obviously a lot of hard work from a lot of people, kind of a culmination of, I feel like, the, I've been with the city for about three years, and I feel like we've really been working on a lot of things that kind of led up to this. So I will go over some background and details about the grant, we'll talk about our collaborators, and then get into the work plan and some of the deliverables. So a little bit about the background, this actually began, we got a grant in 2023 called Partners for Places. A group of us got this grant from the Funders Network, and the purpose of this grant was really at the intersection of environmental sustainability and environmental justice work. And this grant required a partnership across, it involves a city sustainability office, CBOs, which are local community-based organizations or nonprofits, and a local funder. And Cooper Foundation was gracious enough to provide the matching funds that we needed for this grant, and it was a total of $300,000 that we got over the course of a year to run a program. We ended up calling our group the Scrap Collective, scrap being an acronym for Sustainable Community and Regenerative Agriculture Project. And with the Scrap Collective, with all of our partners, we managed to divert 123,000 pounds of food waste that we kept out of our landfill. We engaged over 4,000 community members through more than 100 events. And the Scrap Collective partners were Mission Waco, World Hunger Relief, Global Revive, Family of Faith Worship Center, DeShack Farmers Market, Baylor University, and the City of Waco. I did want to mention, one of the requirements of the grant was to have someone who is considered the equity facilitator for the group of partners. And so we found a wonderful woman from Baylor University, Dr. Stephanie Body, who was our equity facilitator. She's not able to be here today, but the reason is she is in Cairo, Egypt today, and she is actually at a UN conference, and in fact, she is speaking about the Scrap Collective to global leaders right now. So it's pretty exciting for us to really see what's happened with the Scrap Collective. And I'll mention Dr. Josh King, another professor at Baylor University who's also there. So that's, that's pretty exciting. And so, you know, we were really excited, this group, as we worked together, and we had so much success on this project, and we really wanted to continue the work and find some additional funding. We looked around at different opportunities and especially the federal grants that were out there. And so we came across the EPA Community Change Grant, which was a grant that really fit a similar goal to what we had been doing in terms of that intersection between environmental sustainability and environmental justice work. And so we were fortunate, so the Funders Network, who provided the Partners for Places grant, they were really happy with the work that we did with their Partners for Places grant, and so they, in fact, offered us some additional grant money specifically to work on a federal grant to get some more money to continue our work. So with that additional funding, we actually reached out to an organization called HARC, which stands for the Houston Advanced Research Center. And this organization, I became familiar with them through my work on the Solar For All grant, and I recognized that this was an organization that had a lot of capacity, a lot of ability to write and write successful grants and also administer large federal grants. And so we invited them to come here to Waco to help facilitate an all-day workshop, and we brought all the partners together to work on the grant application. So a little, little bit about the grant itself, I'll just read this overview, quote, "to support comprehensive community and place-based approaches to redressing environmental and climate injustices for communities facing legacy pollution, climate change, and persistent disinvestment. These concentrated local investments will fund community-driven, change-making projects that center collaborative efforts for healthier, safer, and more prosperous communities." So one of the requirements in the application was it needed to be a partnership, they called it a statutory partnership, and so Mission Waco is the lead on this grant, but they needed a partner, and the City of Waco fulfilled that statutory partnership requirement. It also required an application of between $10 and $20 million. And we realized with the Scrap Collective that we probably wouldn't be able to have the capacity to spend $10 million over the three-year requirement of the grant, so we knew that we had to expand this to include a lot of other projects as well. And in fact, the grant encouraged multiple projects. So we have a number of partners on this, other sub-receipients that are part of this grant. The, the applications are actually still open, they're evaluating the applications on a rolling basis, and the deadline, the final deadline is November 21st. But we were notified about a month ago that we were awarded this grant. I'll talk a little bit about some of the requirements. There are a couple major requirements. Requirement one involved climate action strategy. So the grant had a laundry list of strategies that we could, we could pick and choose from in terms of what we wanted to focus our work on, and I've listed five here. These are the strategies that we specifically called out in our grant application for requirement two, requirement one, and then requirement two was related to pollution reduction strategies. And so we had three strategies that we called out in the grant that we'll be working on. So I did want to mention, obviously, you know, my work at the city is very focused on particularly supporting the environmental sustainability of our community, and this grant certainly, you know, is satisfies that strategic goal for the city council. But I definitely want to point out that this grant really fulfills a number of strategic goals, and I'd say especially on the resiliency, provide a safe and resilient city, and also equity, create a culture of equity inclusion. That's a real big focus of this grant. So our application was for almost $17.9 million, and we were told that we would be awarded the full amount. We're currently negotiating with EPA right now to begin the grant period January 1st of 2025, and again, that grant period will be for three years, so we'll have to spend the money by the end of 2027. The, as I mentioned, Mission Waco is the lead applicant on this grant, so they will be receiving the full award, they will be utilizing about $7 million of that for their projects. The City of Waco will utilize about 2.2 million through housing and almost a million through the Health District. HARC is going to be doing a significant amount of program administration for this grant, and in fact, the funding will, for the sub-receipients, will come through HARC. So in fact, the City of Waco will be getting their funds through HARC, as well as World Hunger Relief, Family of Faith Worship Center, and finally Baylor University. I did also want to mention, we, you know, we have a number of other partners that were involved in the Scrap Collective. Those partners will be working on this grant as well, they will be part of the projects that we're working on, even though they weren't specifically written in as sub-receipients, but they are definitely included in the work we're doing. So just quickly, going through our work plan, the Housing Department will have funding to do some more work on lead abatement, so both the lead paint issues in a lot of our housing as well as lead pipes in the water lines. The Public Health District was not part of the original Scrap Collective, but they are going to be playing a pretty significant role with us through this grant, they're going to be doing a lot with the partners in the Scrap Collective. They also do a lot of work with local schools, and so they will expand what we're doing with the Scrap Collective within the schools in terms of educating folks about food waste diversion and composting, community gardens, healthy eating and cooking. They'll also have a tree program that they'll be able to provide some native trees and education in that area with the community, as well as working with some local businesses, restaurants, to be using more compostable containers in their businesses. So I'm going to turn it over now to John and Emily to talk about what Mission Waco's doing.
Yeah, Mayor, council members, thanks for having us today. First, I want to acknowledge Mr. Kaufman's efforts to make this happen. This is a significant grant for all of these, our small nonprofit friends, including us. It's a huge deal for us. Also, I want to thank our partners for helping out, it was not possible without Mr. Kaufman's work and them as well. I also want to highlight how much of a unique opportunity and partnership this is for Mission Waco and the city. I think historically, it's been the nonprofits coming to the city to beg for money, and now we get to return the favor a little bit. So you're welcome. This is a really true partnership where we're linking arms, coming together, sharing resources, and this may sound cheesy, but I believe in it, is really to make our community and our city a real city to believe in, and I believe that. So I want to briefly talk about how this is going to affect Mission Waco with the $7 million that we are keeping as a part of this grant. First, it's going to provide the ability for Creekside Community Village and our Meyer Center, which is Mission Waco's sort of one-stop shop for the unhoused community, to host resiliency centers in the case of power failures because of inclement weather. It's also going to provide permeable parking and driving surfaces, as well as a number of other climate resilient elements out at Creekside Community Village. It will update HVAC, accessibility, energy efficient at the Meyer Center, which is a very old building and very expensive to renovate, but also at the lighthouse, one of Mission Waco's transitional housing units. Next slide, Eric. Second, it's going to provide a number of e-vehicles, solar charging stations for multiple programs at Mission Waco. I want to highlight, it's also going to provide a scholarship program for TSTC and the Solar Energy Technology Program, providing not just tuition assistance, but as well as room and board and help with applicants going through that process. It's also going to help Mission Waco's Urban REAP program, which stands for Renewable Energy and Agriculture Project, which is going to help improve community food waste collection, composting, gardening, while offering paid internships and certifications in environmental fields such as composting as well. And here to talk a little bit more about what this, what these funds are going to be doing with the Scrap Collective is our Director of Urban REAP at Mission Waco, Emily Hills.
Hi, good afternoon, Mayor, City Council. It's really exciting to be able to talk about this, like they've said, this has been a long time coming. I know Eric said that we first got the Partners for Places grant in 2023, but we actually got a planning grant for that grant in 2022. So this has been about two and a half years coming, so I'm very excited to be able to talk to you guys about this. As Eric mentioned, we had the Scrap Collective that we officially formally named this last year, and through that collective, we were able to unite a bunch of different people around the city that do complementary things, all with the goal of trying to increase food security in our community. And we were really focusing on two main components, one was gardening, but one is also composting, food waste diversion. How do we get that food waste out of the landfill and back into our soil so we can grow a healthier, greener community? And so we did that primarily through infrastructure, so we created compost site collection sites, but we also did a lot of education and outreach, right? It's one thing to have a compost bin, it's another one for people to actually use it. So we really wanted to complement the two and pair the gardening with the composting to make, to kind of create that link for why composting matters, right? Without compost, without healthy soils, you don't have healthy food. And so this grant is really going to allow us to continue that work, but also expand upon it and build upon it. So Eric, if you want to do the next slide, that'd be great. So I know John mentioned about the, about Urban REAP, we will continue doing composting and education, and I, actually, go back one more, let me, let me speak a little bit about Urban REAP before I go into our partners. So we will be doing the community food waste collection, and then, like John said, we will be able to have paid internships. We have a really robust partnership with Baylor, which is great, but that's very self-selected because we can't necessarily pay them, so we're excited about the opportunity to be able to provide financial opportunities for people who are interested in this work. And then we also have a composter certification course that this will, this coming spring is the fourth year, we'll be offering that, and that's meant to really create people who can spread the good news of composting, so trying to train people so that there's multiple people in the community who can do that work. Thank you, Eric. World Hunger Relief has also been a pretty substantial partner, they have a farm that can use all the compost, and their goal is to alleviate hunger through sustainable agriculture, education, and research, and so they have been able to produce compost that they then use to grow produce that they sell at a farmer's market, at our farmer's market. And so they'll continue to do that work, they've also been a really great source for commercial composting because they can handle that kind of load, and so they'll be able to continue and expand that. They'll also be able to bring back their internship, I don't know if you guys remember, they used to have an internship program that they had to suspend for a little bit, but they'll be able to bring it back, training people in climate smart agriculture techniques. And then kind of a newer thing is their Prairie, Black Land Prairie Restoration Project, they will be able to create a little pocket prairie, which will not only provide ecosystem services, but also be an education space for them, to kind of speak about why there's value in that. Thank you, Eric. Family of Faith is another kind of staple in our community, I'm sure you guys have, if you have not spoken with Pastor Rubin, you have heard of him, he does many amazing things. They feed 800 families every week that go through their food pantry, so they do a lot of work, and through scrap, they were able to grow and build a garden, and then start with education on nutrition and gardening as well, right? So to increase that food sovereignty, right, not just access to food, but knowledge of food. And so they'll be able to continue that, but they will be the third resilience hub. So John spoke about the resilience hubs at Meyer Center and out at Creekside, Family of Faith will be a third one, which is great because they already kind of are serving as one, but they'll have that energy resilience built into their infrastructure, and they'll be able to continue the work that they're doing. And then the last thing that they'll do is they have this amazing field that gets flooded, so they'll be able to work on that field to make sure that it doesn't flood and can be a space for the community to use as recreation. Thank you, Eric. And then the other partner that is explicitly mentioned in this grant is Baylor University. They have been another really helpful partner in Scrap because they have so many students and teachers and professors that they can connect us with. And so the main thing that they're trying to do is how can they connect what the students are doing at Baylor with the work in the community? How can they make that link stronger? And so they've already been connecting classes and student projects with people in the community who are doing this kind of work. And so they'll, again, be able to strengthen that. They also have... Hold on, it'll come back to me. They have their Baylor Community Garden, which they were able to revive with the funds from scrap, and that's been a really robust compost site, actually, for students and classes to be able to compost. So kind of bringing that sustainability culture to the campus. And then this is another really exciting, new thing that they're, they're able to do is the Department of Education, and I want to thank Kevin McGill for showing up today as well, to actually create more support for teachers in schools and to do trainings on the value of gardening and composting in schools. Our teachers, as you guys know, are always overworked, so how can they provide more supports for these teachers to be able to do gardening and composting? We were actually able to give ten thousand dollars to five different schools. So each school got two thousand dollars to try and start gardens and composting onsite. So that's, that's something we were able to do with the Partners for Places, and will continue, that work will continue through this funding as well. And then last but not least, they will be doing a Mayborn Museum exhibit to kind of raise awareness about what we're doing. And my understanding is that is a student-led project, so the students will be the ones developing that. Thank you, Eric. So that's kind of a summary of scrap and what we've done and where we're going with it. Obviously, there are a ton of grant metrics for this, so I tried to clump them into categories, composting, so how much we're collecting, how much we're producing, but also participation of houses, housings, households, businesses, and restaurants, nonprofits, and schools. This grant specifically talks a lot about green spaces and rainwater infrastructure, so supporting clean water, and so there is some metrics around that. And then if you want to go to the next one. And then, of course, green energy, community engagement is huge. That's a big part of this, is how will we engage the community? So we will be keeping track of that. And then finally, that training for that workforce development piece, that's really fundamental to this grant.
Thank you.
Thanks. Great presentation. Any questions of the group or comments?
Thank you all for this awesome presentation. I, I did hear from Dr. Boddy relatively early this morning from, from Cairo, so she was super excited about this presentation happening. I'm also super supportive of her work. She has, you know, in her work in food insecurity, she has been an integral part of our church's community garden at Oliver Chapel, and I know it's involved. I think that this, this manner and this, this execution of this grant, which was a tremendous boon for our whole community, is pretty awesome. I have friends who are city managers that are applying in different cities for this grant, and they were like, who did y'all's grant? And I said, well, I said it was led by Mission Waco, and they were like, well, bless their hearts. Tell them that they have my utmost respect. But moreover, I think that the collective work that you're doing and linking those particular partners within our community is going to be so expansive in how it does. I mean, like, just what, the summit was, what, two weeks ago, last week? I don't know. But hearing about Pastor Rubin's mobile food pantry, I mean, the things that can happen and that can grow from this, the experiences of what, you know, even District One has, has received with its relationship with the Shack and, and, and women in agriculture and creating community gardens and all of those things are so important because it really offers us an opportunity to really go back to the basics. You know, I tell people all the time, my grandmother had a garden in, in the lot next to her house. It was not just a personal garden, it was a lot-sized garden, and it belonged to the neighborhood. Yes, she tended it, well, we tended it, but, you know, we weren't the only people who received the spoils from that, and that was important to her, to make sure that whoever, whatever needs were, were there, were met. And I think that this is an opportunity to continue to do that, but teach us because we've forgotten those basic things and to go back to creating an opportunity to be resilient in ourselves and do the things that the earth will provide for. So I thank you all for stewarding that and, and making, closing the circle. I think that the work with the health district will be incredibly important, just on a macro level, of what we can do to encourage better health for our community, and that is, that can be done with our own hands. And, you know, and the opportunity to link that with the education so that the next generation will not forget what, how to take care of themselves, and then they will be able to teach men how to fish. So I thank you for that work. I look forward to seeing how this grows over the next few years. Thank you for giving us some money. Appreciate you. And I look forward to whatever we can do as a city to continue to make this grow in advance.
This is an awesome collaboration and just is a testament to kind of the, some of the health of the institutions of our community that we can collaborate in this way so successfully. And so, yeah, the city has a longstanding, we will accept your money policy, and so we absolutely are grateful for the nonprofits kind of returning it. And as it turns out, we actually need it in this budget cycle. So, no, but appreciate all your good work. Appreciate, I see Dean Singletary back there, School of Social Work. Appreciate their collaboration, Mission Waco. Eric, appreciate your great work facilitating this as these, I don't quite know what a statutory partner is, but I'm, I'm happy to be one here, and I think it's awesome to come alongside y'all and, and improve our community in so many different ways here. So appreciate the presentation and all the great work that y'all have been doing.
Yeah, I share those same sentiments. I really love how the named partners in this grant showcase the intersectionality of the need for community health and resilience. You see the, the different entities that are working hard with this, from our public health district to the Family of Faith Worship Center, Baylor University, World Hunger Relief, Mission Waco, I can go on. It is, there's not one solution for the, the big community health problems that we face when we're looking for a more sustainable and resilient and healthy community. So I'm really excited to have you guys as the sort of lead on this. One, because, you know, it protects us legally, but two, because we're able to partner and come alongside you in the really good work and see a benefit from it. And I love when, when money can be spent in Waco and there's a tangible benefit. So thank you for that. I'll say that Mission Waco, John, specifically, you guys were noted on the last agenda item too, so it is not lost on us that you're a very busy person. So thank you for making time to be here this evening. And Emily, thank you for the work that you do with Urban REAP. Between you guys and the Shack, I've got all of my, every spring for, for the garden in the back of our house, I've had all of my plant and compost needs met and then some. So I really appreciate the work you do, as well as the educational piece there, and really sincerely thrilled about this. You mentioned the sort of timeline dating back a couple of years now, so it's really cool to see come to fruition.
I'd just like to commend you on securing the grant and for putting together a plan that's going to help the citizens of Waco tremendously. Thank you.
Yeah, I mean, this is great. I had to, when I first saw this, I thought it was one point seven nine million. I thought, man, that's a lot. I mean, how did they get one point eight million dollars? And then eighteen million. I mean, it's, it's a, it's a big, it's a big old chunk. And they're all fed funds. Also, there's no city matching or municipal matching or local matching. So congratulations on just the perseverance of getting, going after it, and, and congratulations on the, on the win. I love the teamwork. I mean, you pulled seven groups together that are all kind of going the same direction and, and pulling together and making, making sure everybody kind of had a piece in it and making, making sure it all fit. That, that's very impressive. And then also, Mr. Kaufman, I appreciate on behalf of the city, it's always weird on these federal programs, we talked about it in the last one, but we needed new flooring and new windows in some of our neighborhood homes, and you figured out a way to get a grant from the EPA to make that kind of wander all the way back to our, our neighborhood in Waco. So you never know how the federal grants work, but this one is, is working great. And then, John, I mean, what you're doing at Mission Waco is great, and this, and the whole Creekside community, having, really, this is bringing it to life. There's a lot of people working on it, and a lot of people are proud of the work you're doing there, and having this grant sort of, I don't know if it gets us over the finish line, but it gets us much closer to the finish line. And I appreciate your work on that. So this is great all the way around. A great work by all the people involved, and eighteen million, big number.
Mayor, I hate to, to jump back in and not give you the last word, but as you were talking about that, it reminded me, I know I mentioned that John was featuring the last agenda item, but this, Emily, you mentioned earlier, the, the need for food waste diversion ties into even the next agenda item, because if you're not aware, we recently had to build a new landfill, and those things don't last for forever. So really appreciative of, and I'm sure Cody, who's here now, is also really appreciative of the diversion efforts to keep things out of his neck of the woods.
Thanks, guys. Appreciate it. Okay, now for the last session, and we have a segue here too. We were talking about scrap here also, and we moved from scraps to the landfill, I think, Bradley.
Nailed it. Nailed it. We've got a
The spirit of Dale Fissler right there.
Okay.
Cody Patillo joining us, our Director of Solid Waste Services. Cody and, and folks around City Hall and on his team have been really busy, and you're going to see some of that imagery here in a moment, on transitioning from our current landfill site, nine forty-eight A, and constructing a new landfill site, what we're calling twenty-four hundred, as well as a transfer station to serve the community. Cody and the team just have really, I was mentioning this to a council member this week, have really made me proud in the way they've approached something that could have gone, and still, I guess, could go really poorly, but to date, to not be wondering if we're going to beat the timelines that we established for ourselves is, I'm just very thankful.
Yeah.
Because the political issues that could have come with a, a full landfill at one site and one that's not ready to have trash delivered at another, could get wildly complicated and expensive to resolve. And so I look forward to Cody's presentation and him speaking into where they are in the project. So Cody?
All right. Thank you, City Manager Ford. Thank you, Mayor and Council. We're going to provide an update on the solid waste facilities. I'm Cody Patillo, the Director of Solid Waste. All right, so we are going to talk about the airspace capacity at the existing landfill, the progress for construction at, sorry, the construction progress at the new landfill and transfer station, as well as the operations at the transfer station. All right, so the next couple of slides are the information we've, we've shared in previous updates. We have finished up the two thousand and twenty-four fiscal year for TCEQ, so those are actual numbers from two thousand and eighteen to two thousand and twenty-one. That's so, this is the annual tonnage coming into the existing landfill, as a reminder. From two thousand and eighteen to two thousand and twenty-one, we were pretty steady, and then had a big jump from two thousand and twenty-one to two thousand and twenty-two as Lacey Lakeview landfill started to reach capacity. And then they went through a permit modification to expand their facility. That permit was approved in February of two thousand and twenty-four. So March of two thousand and twenty-four, we saw a pretty significant reduction in the tons of waste coming to our landfill, about a twenty-five to thirty percent reduction. So we finished the year at about three hundred and eighteen thousand tons, and for FY twenty-five, we're tracking to be around three hundred thousand, maybe a little bit less for tons coming into us, which is good whenever we're wanting to extend the life of a landfill as we're building these new facilities. For, this is the airspace capacity. This is the annual, we do an annual airspace analysis, and then starting in two thousand and twenty-one, we did this twice a year to really dial in that fill date or that closure date. The box in the blue was from our previous update in May, so that the top line, or the top row showing September of two thousand and twenty-five, that is when we were projecting the landfill to fill up. And as we got new tonnage, projected tonnage coming in, as well as our compaction rates have gone up from investments in equipment as well as software, GPS units, that, the box in the red is the updated airspace analysis showing our closure to be in February of two thousand and twenty-six. So those are good stories. We're, we're getting less waste and we've extended the life, so we really not, don't have that concern. Mr. Ford had mentioned where we'd run out of space before a new facility's open, and we'll get into some of that detail in a few slides. So for the new landfill, MSW twenty-four hundred, here is the site overview. This is off of FM nine thirty-nine and between Axle Mount Com. So we're going to go over the projects that make up the landfill. We'll start with the entrance road. So first shout out to our comms team for going out here and getting some amazing footage that shows the progress that we've made throughout, throughout this entire construction process. So this is the entry road. It's point seven miles of pavement that get us from the highway through the scale house to the administrative and maintenance shop, out to, all the way to the Sector One. This work was performed by a local contractor, Knife River, with a cost of three point four million dollars, and this was completed in June of two thousand and twenty-four. This project was actually finished in about sixty to sixty-five percent of the allotted working days. So they, they did, they worked pretty quickly. We were really excited about how quickly they did move. All right, and so here's the biggie. This is the first sale of the new landfill. It is a little over twenty acres. We had to move about one point five million cubic yards of dirt. You can see the stockpiles to the left there to get this, this cell open. And just, just for reference, the future cells are about ten to eight acres, while this one's twenty. For the life of this cell, it, it should hold about one point seven million yards of, or sorry, one point seven million tons of waste. So this project is under contract with Hammond Excavation. They've done work at the existing landfill, and they are really knocking this one out of the park. We're really excited to have them. They, probably the best contractor I've ever personally worked with. So this project is slated to finish in January of two thousand and twenty-five. Permit or fencing, this project's complete. So as part of our permit, we have to have a secure facility. So with this project, we had to install nineteen thousand linear feet of fencing. This was finished in September. Our maintenance building project. So this is our maintenance shop. It's going to be a slab for our administrative offices, as well as our citizens' collection station, and hopefully nobody gets motion sickness on this one. It moves pretty fast. But it's with HCS General Contractors. Although they're a local contractor, we are projected to finish about three point five million for overall costs with a completion of March of two thousand and twenty-five. Now, as we look into the schedule, one, one thing important to note here is, even if we were to push opening our new facilities as quick as possible, this project doesn't have to be complete to open these facilities.
Right.
There will be some improvements here. Our maintenance shop is going to be a little bit bigger, close to the same size, but the bay doors are going to be modified to where we can fit all of our equipment in there. Right now, we can't fit all of our equipment in our shop. And then we'll have modular offices. We looked at that for cost savings. And then our citizens' collection station's going to be a significant improvement from what we have at the existing landfill with paved, paved surfaces, and that will help us keep our general public separate from the, the heavy traffic flow at the working face, and that will keep that operation just a little bit more safe. All right, moving into our scales, our entry scales. This, again, is going to be a significant improvement from what we have at the existing landfill. Right now, we have one inbound, one outbound scale, and so our wait, our queue times are pretty lengthy during the heavy traffic periods or if the weather is inclement. Now, this will be two inbound scales, one outbound with a bypass lane, so we'll be able to process our customers a lot quicker, and it will improve that customer experience whenever you visit our, our sites. So this project is slated to be finished in December of two thousand and twenty-four, and another local contractor with JH Contracting. For our utilities, so we are getting power out to the property. Obviously, we're going to need that. One thing to mention here is we've went forward with getting three-phase power out to the site. Right now, we really only need single phase, but in about three to five years, we'll have to install a landfill gas system, and that landfill gas system will require, require three-phase. So rather than going in and having to pull out majority of that, that investment, we're, we're going ahead and going with that three-phase power to make sure we're set up for the future growth. And that is set to finish in December of two thousand and twenty-four. So here's the schedule. There really is not much change from the May update. I'd say the biggest one, and probably the most positive, is that, that red line going up and down. We've moved that out from July of two thousand and twenty-five to September of two thousand and twenty-five. And if you remember, the airspace capacity, we think we can make it to February. So we're still planning conservatively, and we're pushing forward with the construction aggressively, just trying to hit the same schedule we've shown in previous updates. The big thing here is finishing up the critical items, like the Sector One, the entry scales, so we can get to that TCEQ pre-opening inspection. So once we get there, that takes about thirty days. We've already opened dialogue with the TCEQ about the pre-opening inspection, and they're really excited about the facilities, both the landfill and the transfer station. So we're ready, trying to make that process as seamless as possible, so we can cut that thirty-day period down as much as possible. And then, once we are ready and open to take waste, then we'll have to have that soft opening, so we have select fill or a fluff layer. So we're making sure we protect that liner and make sure that nothing penetrates or punctures that liner. All right, so this is how much it costs to build a landfill. All right, so this is how much it costs to build a landfill. $20.8 million. So this is a little bit increased from our May update with some change orders that rolled in through the process, but, but nothing crazy. This actually finished under budget and within the funding that was allotted for the new landfill. Cody, was that to date, or is that projected entire cost? That is projected to finish. Great, 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 great. All right, transfer station. This is the site view. This is off of University Parks, FM 3400, so U Parks Radel Road. It is on an old landfill, MSW 1039. That landfill stopped taking waste in the late 80s. This is probably my favorite video. But, so this is a big project with the transfer station. This is the actual facility. It's the entry road, it is the scales, the parking, the actual facility, all the pavement, and the citizens' collection station. So here you can see that it's an out-grade facility, so you can really see what it's going to look like once we get this thing operational. This is with Hammond Excavation, the same contractor that's doing our Sector 1. So initially, that was a little scary for us internally. If they turned out to not be such a good contractor, we might not, we might be having a different conversation, or maybe y'all are talking to somebody different. But they're, they're doing, they're doing a great job. Like I said, probably the best contractor I've ever worked with in my career. So we're looking at finishing this project close to a $14 million price tag. That does include that early, early finish incentive. So our contractor is expected to finish by January of 2025. And so that early finish incentive, if they finish before January 24th of 2025, they'll receive that full incentive, and we expect them to hit that target, and we're doing everything we can to help them hit that target. All right, so the next couple of projects are just some support projects for the facility. This is a sewer project. It's tying into City Waco Sewer to make sure that we're getting any water, contaminated water is going to our central plant to be treated and disposed of properly. And this project is substantially complete, we're going through the punch list items, and just, well, this one will be knocked out pretty soon. So as part of the permit process, we had to do a traffic impact analysis, and it was determined we needed to add a left turn lane in the southbound direction, so the opposite way of this, where this video's going. So that's what this project is. It's under contract with TTG Utilities, and we are projected to finish in January of 2025. And it's kind of the same story as the last schedule. Really, the only major change is pushing out that closure date for the existing landfill. And so the pre-opening inspection is not quite as intensive as a landfill pre-opening inspection. There are just not as many moving parts. So, but again, we've already started that dialogue, we're ready to get that process rolling. So for this, again, this, this has increased from our last update in May. The FM 3400 project had not bid, so we didn't have that included, and then we also had a few change orders. So this project did go over budget, but we were able to utilize funding, or remaining funding, from the new landfill project. And between the two, we were going to be able to cover all the costs between both projects. And this is also projected to the, to finish line here. Operations. So if you take away that blue box, and the waste haul are going direct to the landfill, that's what our current operations are. So our recycling haulers, collecting, and waste haulers are collecting curbside, recycling haulers are going to Sunbrad, our MRF, and the waste haulers are going straight to the landfill. Moving forward, the majority of our operation, waste operation, will go to the transfer station, and then transfer trucks will haul to the new landfill, while some of our operations will still direct haul to the new landfill, depending on what they have, CND material, which we're pretty much trying to keep construction and demolition material out of the transfer station, especially during the initial opening, and then work with our contractor to make, see if we can broaden what we take. All right, so transfer station operation, privatization. So this is a new conversation. We went out with a RFP to, for waste hauling services. So Stella Environmental was the top vendor, we went to contract negotiations, and during that process, they came up, came to us with a proposal to take over all of the waste handling duties at the transfer station. After we analyzed that proposal, it was, looked very advantageous for us to move forward with that. So that is actually on the Agenda Today, Resolution 2024-900, for a contract to award the transfer station operations to Stella Environmental Services. So I hate to read off the slide, but Stella Environmental Services, they are the leading transfer station management in Southern US. They are operating in 90, over 90 transfer stations, and they already load 70% of their waste. And I want to highlight that because it means they know what they're doing and they're good at what they do. So adding them to the solid waste operation in the city as a partner is going to be a long-term benefit for us. So some, some positives for privatization, it's going to eliminate the need for additional FTEs, it's going to reduce our annual O&amp;M budget, and reduce the future CIP request. And then one thing to mention about the, the contract that's on the agenda for consideration today is, several months ago, we purchased heavy equipment, preparing to run the transfer operation with internal staff, with FTEs, right? Well, as we started working through this, that was a sticking point, how, what are we going to do with this equipment that we've purchased that's already on site? And talking with Stella, they really liked what we bought, they want, that's exactly what they would have got, that's what they told us. So part of the contract is they're going to reimburse us the cost of that heavy equipment once we open up the transfer station. So we'll be able to take those funds and utilize them for equipment replacement for, with solid waste in the future, so it'll help us reduce our future CIP request. All right, so talk about some of the responsibilities. So city's responsibilities are going to be the scale house, taking care of all the transactions, processing all the customers, and then the litter abatement along the highway, which is already in a contract with Goodwill. So Goodwill has had a long-term partnership with City of Waco to provide litter abatement services along Highway 84 for the existing landfill, and we have expanded that to include the transfer station, the roads approaching the transfer station. We've also went out with a request for bids for litter abatement along the roads approaching the new landfill, and so we'll be coming to the council for consideration to award that contract here in the near future. And that, those are requirements from our permit, and then for the new landfill, there are also requirements from some settlement agreements, so we want to make sure we're honoring those commitments. Next are the contractor responsibilities. So once they come in, they're going to perform all the waste handling duties. That's everything beyond the scale house. They're going to direct the traffic, spot all the customers, handle the traffic at the collection station, process waste, load the trucks, haul the waste to the new landfill, and then any other permit requirements that are necessary on the facility. All right, so talk about the transition. This is, to me, this is, this is my favorite side. This is a good story here. Red box here at the top, this is more of a flow of how our facilities open, when, when is, what facility's open, when is it closed? So as we go through, you can see the existing landfill is open, then we open the soft opening for the new landfill transfer station, all the way up until the existing landfill's closed. This gold line is the remaining airspace capacity at the existing landfill. So we get about 25,000 tons per month at the existing landfill. So as, as we're getting tons, we, rather than open as quickly as possible, so if we open as quickly as possible, that gold, that gold line is going to finish somewhere around 250,000 tons of airspace remaining at the, at the existing landfill, which I don't, really is not a good business decision for us. We want to make sure we're really maximizing the airspace, because there's some revenue that can be generated there, obviously, and the operating expense is, is less at the existing landfill than it is going to be to operate two facilities. So, well, what we're doing here is pushing out the opening to September of 2025 for that soft opening for about six months, and then fully transitioning to the new sites in March of 2026. And, and that's kind of a moving target, because what we're going to do is watch the tons that are coming in, and we want to land in this sweet spot, this landing zone of having 50,000 to 100,000 tons remaining at the existing landfill. There's two reasons for that. One is, it's going to make our overall transition a lot less chaotic, going from one site to the other, if we're not running to zero, as well as is a great contingency plan for any type of emergency event or storm event where there's a lot of debris that needs to get cleaned up quickly, that we have some airspace remaining at the existing landfill that's nearby. So this is a pretty significant shift from what we've talked about. Rather than hurry up, are we going to make it now, it's, we're going to make it, now we can delay the opening to where it's advantageous for the City of Waco. All right, for summary, construction costs are 20.8 projected to the finish. Transfer station, that's for landfill transfer station, 15.8 projected to the finish. Our goal is still to finish all the critical infrastructure by January of 2025, but rather than hurry up and open, we want to strategically transition to our new sites to make sure we're maximizing the airspace at our existing site. Wrapping up, I know I'm up here presenting face of solid waste, but we wouldn't be in this positive position if it wasn't for the team I get to be a part of. They've really bought in and committed to this idea of best-in-class services while we're developing these state-of-the-art facilities that are going to improve the quality of life for our residents for generations to come. So we're really excited about it, and I'm thankful for the team I'm on. All right, so a little plug for our Polar Express. Here's our schedule, unveiling at the first meeting in December, and then the overall schedule, and then just a plug for residents and customers, download that Waco Curbside app, check our website for how you may be impacted during the holiday season with your collections. So if that'll take any questions or comments you may have. Any questions or comments for Mr. Patillo?
I'll say I have the Curbside app. It's great. I get a notification that before every, every pickup is due, and it tells me which bins to take to the curb. So if you don't have it, you're right, you should get it. And we moved, we're moving into a new house this week and had a bunch of stuff to put out on the curb at the house we're moving into, and I was able to cross, cross-plug here, use the My Waco app to submit a bulk waste pickup, and it was all taken on the next trash day. So got, got a couple apps out there. It's not too many. I know if you don't like having stuff on your phone, it's just two apps really get you situated. But Cody, I want to commend you, man, in first, you know, in, in 2024, it is not my expectation that you would have flyover drone videos of projects that would be in the seven figures and not eight and above. So obviously, the, the total cost is going to be near that 35 million, but, you know, as you went through each slide and you had like a drone video, and I was looking at the, I'm like, oh, that's only 3 million? That's only 1 million? The fence somehow is under $1 million for 19,000 linear feet? That's crazy. And, and so to be able to manage costs that well, and also get us, get us ahead of schedule to the point where we have an added cost benefit of utilizing the existing landfill for a longer amount of time, I really commend you and your team for the work that you guys have done and put into this to, to put the city in an advantageous position. There were, there were no bones made about the fact that, you know, Bradley asked our different departments to look at their budgets and see where we could cut, and I'm sure he really enjoyed looking at this project and realizing that you guys had saved versus what, where we could have been at this point, so much time and money. So thank you for that. I'm sure the taxpayers and repairs thank you for that. But yeah, you, you and your team, this has been a really awesome project to watch and to track, because it's one of the ones that every time you come back, it's good news. And that's really rare in this work, so thank you for that.
Thank you.
Thanks, Cody. Great presentation. I'm going to echo Councilmember Ewing, or excuse me, Mayor Pro Tim Ewing's sentiments. And I'll only add that, in the vein of sustainability, I appreciate the ability to recycle, reuse, and repurpose those trucks, because I know that they, that was a cost that, you know, just anticipating in, in the work that we were going to do. But, you know, apparently, our good taste is, is apparent, and the company will, will take those and allow us to do other things with that money. I know that this has not been an easy project for anyone in your department, including management that was leading it, and we appreciate all of the things that have been done to make this possible and fiscally sound. So we appreciate those things. I, I was going to ask a question, and then I realized with the privatization, it may not be our problem about any, like, Wi-Fi access or things that needed to be out there for customer service purposes, but I was like, if that's not our problem, that's not our problem.
Well, still is our problem. Yeah, that, that operation won't really need Wi-Fi, but our scale house still will. So we're actually using, utilizing Starlink at both locations, worked with IT, and...
Like, it's rural, so I knew it wasn't something that would be readily available. So, okay, great.
Yeah, we looked at going with fiber, but the, the cost was substantial, like 150K to the transfer station and like 400,000 to the, the new landfill, so we're going to partner with Starlink.
Awesome. Thank you.
Well done managing and overseeing a project that's rather complicated and is ahead of schedule and on budget. That's, that's really impressive. I was curious, are there, other than normal construction delays, are there other potential obstacles that, that could arise at this point?
Well, so for the, the landfill, not so much. 95% of the liner is in, so unless they went on strike or something, that would be, which is probably not very likely. Transfer station, we're pretty much wrapping that up. They're kind of putting the finishing touches on that, so maybe if there were some significant weather delays that prevented us from getting some pavement done, that would delay the, on the paving of the actual facility, as well as that road widening, that, that could cause some delays. But what we're, even if we had some delays like that, what we're looking at with extending the life of the existing landfill, we feel really comfortable with, we're going to hit our finish date, even if, say, we, we missed our target with construction.
Excellent.
I just want to thank you for the report. Looks like we're heading in the right direction, but I'm really excited about... You can't hear my voice?
I'm sure we can hear you whispering.
About the music bubbles and cheer. I'm looking forward to seeing what your flow looks like. I know the community will enjoy it, and thank you for that. But thank you for all the work that you're doing, Cody. I appreciate that. I know, I know it's not easy, and I thank you, and District Two thanks you for...
Thank you.
Doing all the work that you're doing for our solid waste. Thank you.
Yeah, and I'll just add to the chorus of praise. Great presentation, amazing work, especially as Councilmember Chase said, project management-wise. I mean, this has been a long road from the first rollout of an expanded landfill, and this, I think, should give the public a lot of confidence and faith in kind of the honesty, the transparency, and the effectiveness of our city staff and our city departments in being able to accomplish the public's vision for this. So kudos, great job. Really appreciate the work of you and your team.
Yeah, Cody, nice presentation. Just you, you've managed this whole process very well. I, I love hearing you, because you're, you're still relatively young, right? I love hearing you say, "It's the best contractor I've ever seen here." I love that, I just love hearing that. The optimism is just exudes goodwill, so I, I love the way you manage projects. Sidney and I drove out to 2400 a couple of weeks ago. It looks good. I mean, and by looking good, I mean, you can't see, you can't see it, you know? You see the perimeter fencing and the, the pavement, and it just, it, it's well-planned, and I think the community, the, the region will feel good about this, this landfill. On the transfer station, I like the outsourcing concept there. I think it makes all kinds of sense to have that in a professional third party's hand, and so I think that's a great decision. I like how you're, how we're thinking about future operations in the, in the chart there that shows the resident-facing service are still going to be City Waco people. The people picking up the trash are going to be City Waco employees, just like they, they always have been. And I, I appreciate your pride in, in talking about best-in-class, because that's still going to be reaching the door, the door-to-door people, are still going to be City Waco folks that are aspiring to that best-in-class standard that, that you show. The excellent use of Gantt charts, I love that. And the operations transition, that, that chart also is, I like it, too. It's, it was very good, the timeline of that. And just the project management that's sort of reflected in that, that timeline and that view is, is great. Looking forward to the Polar Express, too. This is, looks like, sounds like fun. The one question I have, and I don't have a lot of time here, but going back to 948A, is there, and we don't have to go into this deep, I'm sure we'll talk about it in the future, but the reclamation process there, and again, if it's just, we're still considering how that works, that's fine, but what, will that start like immediately, or what, I don't even know, the TSEC requirements, or, or what happens on, on that? Yeah, so we've got CIP coming up pretty soon to start the closure phase. So closure phase will be in four phases, and it will happen over a course of several years for us to put the final cover on the existing landfill. And once we go into, finish that closure phase, then we go into post-closure, which is a 30-year period that we have to monitor the facility and take care of the facility. is a 30-year period that we have to monitor the facility and take care of the facility.
Cody, fantastic presentation. Appreciate it. Any other questions?
I got one thing I want to say and I don't usually like to step over council either, but it came to me as y'all were giving Cody a lot of kudos. We had a recent staff retreat and leadership training and there are some things that I think managers has to say sometimes. And what, one of the things Cody did really well in this project, he defined his what really clearly. What is to get this landfill open in time before we're running out of space. But the how he accomplished it is really noteworthy because he brought people along and collaborated really well. And what he didn't show, he sent me a picture a couple of weeks ago of his guys and gals that work for him. He brought them in to have a lunch and he basically gave this whole presentation and talked about how their work mattered to the community and also the intricacies of what's going on and what's being managed. And so educating people along the way, showing them, bringing them along and showing how their work mattered. I'm just real proud of not only the, where he's going to land on timeline and budget, but the how he's accomplishing it. And I think it sets a really good standard for our leadership team as we take on big things. So thanks for letting me jump in there, Mayor. And that's all we've got today.
Absolutely. Fantastic. Thanks again, Cody. Thank you, City Manager Ford. The, we now come to the point of the meeting where we ask for requests for scheduling of future agenda items. Are there any requests for future agenda items?
I don't have any requests for future agenda items, but as it is 5:06 PM, who are watching us live from the internets have a little under two hours to go to any of the 46 polling places that are available in McLennan County to cast your vote on this election day.
I want to say something. We've had two parades and we've been in two floats. And I want to, kudos to City Secretary and her staff. They have been doing an outstanding job for us and I think we need to recognize the hard work that they went to. I know Aaron had a good time busting those balloons. But he was actually helping Michelle and he loved it. But thank you for all your hard work, Michelle. Your staff is outstanding. You stayed right there with us until we all left and the parade, the float went on to come back to City Hall. So I know you worked very, very hard. You staffed it too. And I just want to thank you for representing us and making those floats so enjoyable for us to be on and to walk alongside. So thank you for that.
Thanks, Michelle. And your team, you do a great job with that, no doubt. Josh, did you have something?
Yeah, a full, full echo of that, but also I would say that though Aaron wore a UT Longhorns shirt to the Baylor Homecoming Parade, he's still in our good graces. We still love him because apparently he won a bet with his friends. And so I, I respect the game, but you know, but-
His team members, football team members challenged him and told him, because he always brags about, I want y'all to know this, the city council to his school, which is in Crawford. He brags about us all the time. And so they said, well, and he told him he was going to be in the parade and he was going to be throwing out candy. So they challenged him, dared him to wear a UT t-shirt. So you don't dare, Aaron. He took them off.
And he still did us a good job.
But hey, no one, no one on the parade route said anything, you know, offensive to him or negative to him because he was at the very front of the float, just throwing those candies out everywhere and having a good time.
As long as he was throwing candy, nobody had a problem with it.
Well, and, and they know that that's the crown prince of District 2 right there, you know?
That's right, that's right. But anyway, he had fun.
Mayor, if I may, thank you guys so much for that, but I would also like to say a big thank you to Megan, Jonathan, Graham, Anthony, who's our parade driver, and Trey Busby for all the work that they do and the partnership they, they do with us when we do those parades.
Fantastic job, Michelle. Everybody, thank you so much for the hard work that y'all did for us because y'all made it fun for us to be on the float. And we've got another one coming up Monday and then, and then Christmas.
Keep coming. All right, we will now recess the work session, reconvene regular session for executive session as read into the record by the City Secretary at 5:10 PM.
Given that the city council will go into an executive session in accordance with the following provisions, Personnel Texas Open Meetings Act, Section 551.074, nomination and appointment of individuals to McLennan County Central Appraisal District Board of Directors. We are now in executive session.